Call the meeting door, let's all please rise and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The church is called. Here.
Here.
All right, move to item number two, public comment. All questions come as we direct it to the mayor. Speaker will give you three minutes to comment. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. Put this comment, state your name for the record.
Hi, Bernard. I have a question about the cash payment they've put on the table. Also, I would like questions to the mayor, but you were supposed to be back. You can answer. Okay, great, thank you, I appreciate it. My first question is off page two. There's a bunch of money given to elected officials for the IML conference. Just to let you know, I'm going to throw you those. I'd like to win pass receipts for those before everybody gets a sec. Second thing is on page four. There was a payment to Gallagher in the amount of $25,000. Can you tell me what area that was for? And on the credit card receipt on page, it doesn't have a run on this page. It says watching the raid, can you tell me who that was for? And also on the last page, it said $700 for bulletproof vest. Oh, this officer forgot we had a grant for that. So somebody explain to me how we have to pay $700 for me and a grant. Also, just for interest, on behalf of South Village citizens for public awareness, our group's whole goal is to find out what's going here. There's no transparency in this administration, and we need to know about what's going on with our tax dollars. So, just to let people know, so they don't get upset with me, that we write for you because we want to know what's going on with the money. We have requested information by the house about the seniors, book ads, I am there, and they didn't ask me to return to the people's money. So, just to let you guys know, I'm not taking any more phone calls because if I get a phone call, it's going to be me and you. So can somebody answer my questions?
Before you leave, just real quick, I do have a follow-up question. You said engraving, you know.
Engraving has engraving on the page.
It says engraving, I'm stuck.
Okay.
You see it?
What page was it?
It doesn't have a page in it. I think that's a kind of watch engraving, yes, D. And who is that for?
All right, and then the other thing was bulletproof vest. What page was that?
The last page, there's a $700. On the credit card, I thought we had grants for that. What happened to the grant?
All right. All right, let's go ahead and move forward on the IML. You saw a bunch for elected officials. Those are, oh, they're about $310?
Yes.
Yeah, $310. What happens is elected officials get a check of $310. It's your responsibility to come back with the receipts from.
That's the seminar registration.
Oh, that was the seminar, okay, I'm sorry.
That's the seminar registration.
All right. So, there you go, that's registration. So, that's who they got paid for. That's who registered for IML.
So, I'm not telling you registered. Who registered?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So far, so their names are right next to the registration. So those are the registration. You're going to see coming on another council table will be the amount of money that they get, that they turn to receipts. And I think that's like 300 bucks, right? So, all right, they will talk about that one.
So you stand up. I understand you.
So, I'm answering your question, all right? It's for, there's no debate, okay?
I'm not debating, I'm asking you this point.
So, I'm trying.
Okay.
All right. This is the registration fee for IML.
Okay.
The trustees and departments, they go to IML. There's different classes that they take throughout the week. So there's a registration fee. So that's the registration fee for IML, okay? Which is downtown.
We pay them, the trustees pay them. We pay them or the trustees pay them?
It's your council table. So it gets paid.
So we pay them.
It gets paid, yeah. It's just like any other training that anyone else goes through.
Okay, sorry, I'm for you.
All right, Gallagher, you go for it, I don't care. It's there, and it's, we pay it every year.
Yeah.
Gallagher, do you remember, that is for work that was done last year that we owed them. We were, we still had amount, was it, is this the last amount we owed them?
It's about 200 CDB resurfacing project.
You better, you're in your mind.
This is the final payment for the paving of road. This is 2015 MFT CDB grant resurfacing project. And this is the final report, final payment for road repairs, 2015.
What area?
I don't have the areas, we can find it out.
Okay. There you go. And then the engraving, do you have a note on that one? Ah, it's the last one, the credit card stuff. Oh, it's for a watch engraving? For us though? That's the watch we got for R. Johnson. That's the engraving for the watch for R. Johnson that retired. So we finally need to pay for that. And then the bulletproof vest.
I got that, Mayor.
Okay.
So, we had the two new officers get hired. The one officer came from a part-time position in another department and had a vest. The other officer did not have a vest, and he fell in between the grant. So we bought him a vest. When we get our 2016 grant, we'll just reimburse ourselves for that.
Okay, and this is the officer's name?
Scrubby.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Can I respond to her questions?
You want to do it now, or are you going to do your report?
Well, she asked about it now. I'd like to just. So these accounts, the balance, I'm going to give you, are as of last meeting because I emailed the finance director during the meeting, and he replied back the next day. So the balance of the water sewer fund as of the 17th was $579,805.37. The, he had to send me two separate emails. What is owed to the water sewer fund is $1,387,384.70.
How many? We had eight, seven thousand.
$384.70. And he cannot anticipate any repayment or the exact date of repayment at this time. As far as the, how much came in from the water billing the last cycle was $201,383.82. 201, 383.
383.
And 82 cents.
82 cents.
That was from the last billing cycle.
Last billing, okay.
And what was owed to Republic was $40,449.99. And as of the 17th, that check had not been sent to Republic yet, as of that date.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Your honor.
All right. Thank you.
Next.
Good afternoon, board and Mr. Mayor. Just one small question. With the word transparency being passed around the last few meetings, I'd just like to know, Mr. Mayor, does the board as a whole know everything each other knows about different things? Because I understand we have a little board, a big board, you know, where the mayor's a little bit, certain people are too. It seems like the whole board doesn't know what's going on. Is there real transparency among the board itself with each other? Or is there a lack of? And this, I hope, Mr. Mayor, you'll give the trustees a chance to say what they feel, if they know or don't know, that's your call. And that's all my question.
All right. You know, again, the question you're asking is kind of subjective a little bit. Some trustees may feel they don't know everything. But there is information that's provided maybe to some trustees and aren't provided to other trustees. I met with trustee Burgess right before the Village More meeting tonight, where I give him information. If the rest of the board doesn't have, he's going to report on tonight. Information when it comes to budget and finance, that goes to the Budget and Finance Committee. This last week, I think it was last week, trustee, we met with the department head. Now the trustees were invited. So when you ask, does all the board know what's, everything that's going on? Okay, probably the answer is probably not, probably no. Okay, but when it comes to information getting out to the board as a whole, there's a couple of things that happen. Information goes to the village clerk. The village clerk sends out emails to the village board. Okay, that goes out to it, to them as a whole, okay? Other information that's provided to the board is during the village tour meetings. Okay, so through reports. So like the information that I talked to trustee Burgess about before the meeting, he's probably going to give out a report tonight about what, about the information that he's been provided, and the rest of the board will be informed that. So when you ask, is information given out to trustee here, trustee there? The answer is yes, okay, and in a way. Because I meet with trustees. Again, if something has to do with budget and finance, it's going to trustee Williams or probably trustee Myers. If there's something coming through Public Works, it's going through trustee Burgess. Trying to make sure he has the information. Again, some of that's going to be part of my report tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the stuff that came through last week that I took upon myself, that I informed the residents, that I'm passing it off to the trustees where it should go, okay? I've been doing everything myself for so long, it's hard to let go on certain things. So items are going to be released, okay, to the board. So, I'm sure there's things that trustee Jones knows about parks and wrecks that the other trustees don't know until he comes to the board meeting and he makes a report. So, when it comes to information that has to go out to the entire board, the entire board is informed and it goes to the village clerk or it may go through the village administrator, okay? But again, there's other things that happen where certain trustees are talking about certain things because it belongs to their committees. And their committees will discuss things. And it will be their responsibility to come back to the board as a whole during a committee meeting or during a report at a regular board meeting. So hopefully that answers your question, all right? Thank you.
I hope your audience understood that. Thank you, sir.
All right, next.
Maybe I would like to say that one of our member on human relations husband has passed, Ms. Latoya West. And I would like for us to, right now, I'm on the side of her husband, please, if it's okay with you.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Also, the village clerk, Debbie Williams, has all the details about the funeral and things like that well will be arranged for Saturday. And I would like, if it's okay with you, that she will announce that during her report.
Yeah, she'll do that in her report. All right, thank you. Next. All right, staying on, we'll go to reports from departments, committees, commissions. The fire chief is on a call right now, so I'd leave trustee Myers to pass his report. Trustee Myers.
I have to apologize to the fire chief who just had a bad accident on 394. The chief has tied up some reports and a couple of other things. Somebody asked me to give his report. Fire Department report, 8/23/2016. Over the past two weeks, the fire department responded to 30 calls. The fire department responded to one gas leak, three structural fires, five ambulance assists, three carbon monoxide alarms, two vehicle accidents, 12 fire alarms, one car fire, one water rescue, and one wired down mutually called to another town for assistance. The chief would like to be informed, the mayor and board of trustees. Please be advised that the fire department has all the ladders inspected in the past. All our SCBA air equipment, those are the bottles that we wear on our back when we go into the fire, has been checked and certified again. Door number two, with the remote control motor, there was the wiring, all the, all wirings have been replaced and the door operating. And our new engine is in Wisconsin for bodywork, hoping to see it by December. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Move to police department, police chief Kowalski.
Mr. Mayor, trustees, police service case summary for the last two weeks. We had 33 arrests. We had 565 calls for service. Cases note, on 8/14, officers responded to call of shots fired at the 21700 block of Peterson. Upon arriving, officers found several victims shot by an unknown offender or offenders in a drive-by shooting. Officers found several witnesses in the area, many of whom were uncooperative. Officers were able to obtain information about a possible vehicle involved and immediately dispatched the information to local area departments. Within a short time, Stager PD located a vehicle matching the description involved with the shooting, as well as the driver of the vehicle. The officers appalled the vehicle, took the driver into custody. Victims of the shooting were transported to area hospitals for treatment, at which time one of the victims passed, leaving this matter to be classified as homicide investigation. Due to the severity of the incident, our detective has activated a suburban major crimes task force. The driver of the vehicle was eventually charged with first-degree murder. We've also looked, or contacted the FBI's intel analysts. We're conducting a major compilation of gangs and gang activity in the south suburbs. So we'll be working with them. This is still an ongoing investigation due to animal ordinance. As reported at a previous meeting, a resident reported their dog was killed by their neighbor, their neighbor's dog. Since that time, a review, the ordinance was conducted, and there will be some changes made. I'll be working with trustee Myers and the ordinance committee on those changes. Also, certified letter was sent to the owner of the offending vehicle, advising the dog was deemed dangerous and needed to be removed from the corporate limits of the Sauk Village. Officers confirmed on 8/23 that the dogs were removed from the residence. The owner appeared at the court yesterday, was found guilty and fined. Our squads have been identified to be salvaged, had their radios removed, and are being prepped for the auction. Environmental news, the asbestos is being removed today from the police department. Afterwards, the company will conduct an environmental study to determine the mold issues. And lastly, I'd like to read a letter of thanks from one of the citizens. And it reads, "Chief Kowalski, I wanted to bring to your attention the commendable service that Officer White gave to my mom on August 14th. My mom has lived in Sauk Village for over 50 years, and as last year became a widow. She woke up on Sunday morning to find that her garage had been broken into and left with a large hole in its side. She contacted the non-emergency number and Officer White was dispatched. He treated my mom with such care and kindness. He helped to secure the garage until my husband and I could get there that afternoon. When she thanked him for his help, he replied, 'I'm only doing what I would want someone to do for my mom.' In a time when I feel officers are only given recognition by the media for what the media feels they have done wrong, I wanted to make sure that Officer White's superiors and the community that he serves were told that his officer, that this officer went above and beyond what most would expect of him. Please make sure that he is recognized and if you would, extend my deepest thanks to him for everything he did that day for my mom. Sincerely, Sherri Snakel." That's the end of my report.
Thank you, chief. Move to reports of officers. We've got the mayor's report. Let's see here, I've got a few things I want to report on, and some things I'm going to defer to trustees. But first of all, last week, I played in the Battle of the Burbs. That was the police and fire chiefs against the mayors. I regretfully say that the mayors lost, with that, we got creamed. 22 to 8, ugh, I'll tell you what. Sounds worse, but you should have been out and field playing. It was really bad. But, you know, it's fun, it was for good track, it was for a great cause. We were out there as a fundraiser for the officer in Park Forest that was shot. So, Officer Tim Jones. So, again, proceeds and stuff went to help Dave medical bills and help them. And they had a presentation to his mother and father. So his father gave a good report, his son's getting better. So, again, we, our prayers are to the family, especially to Officer Jones. So, just want to make sure everyone knows that torrents here will be closed on September 1st. They're going to be filling in the track. You'll see they started taking tracks and stuff out, so there's going to be some asphalt work that's going on there. Last week, there were three issues that were brought to my attention, and I said I would make sure that we announced, coming back to the residents at tonight's meeting. Two of these, I'm going to pass off to trustee Burgess. I met with trustee Burgess and I met with Kevin Waller, Director of Public Works. And this is a question for Public Works, so I'm going to pass it off to him. During his report, he'll report on the light there in Lincoln Meadows. He'll also report on the Masenko in Lincoln Meadows there. I think it was Oakbrook, if I remember off the top of my head. So, just want to make sure we know residents, so we get the report back to them tonight. There was a question about water meter charges. There was a 25 different, a $25 charge extra. We're still looking into that, and I don't have an answer tonight, but we're going to go ahead, probably get, have, again, this is something that I took on and we didn't talk about the other night. But again, this is another Public Works issue, so JW, I'll have you work with trustee Burgess on this one, and maybe hopefully you'll get an answer on this one also. It's been brought to my attention about garbage bills for residents with wells. We're going to be working closely with Republic to see what we can do. And here's what happens, is your garbage bill is connected to your water bill. There's residents in Sauk Village that have wells, and they do not receive a water bill. They get charged a different rate. In fact, they pay a rate, what was that, about 20? Five to six dollars more than what we negotiated with Republic. So, we're going to be working closely with Republic, see what we can do somehow, if we can connect it to a sewer bill, or what we can do to get those residents. There's only probably a couple handful residents throughout the village, but they do get a different rate because it's not connected to their water bill. So we're going to be working on that, just so the board understands that. And then last week, I announced some good news about the Arrow Park grant that we worked on. That was a $235,000 grant, and I was going to bring that board out here tonight. I forgot about it again, I apologize. That when Governor Rauner became governor, he put a, he suspended all grants. So this last week, we got word, I guess it was last Tuesday, last Monday, Tuesday, that our grant has been unsuspended. And it was part of the stock grant gap program. And that was a federal grant. So we're excited about that today. I received another email. In fact, at 8:50 a.m. this morning, from Illinois government, talking about the project and they're authorizing advanced payments so we can get started on this. This is something that we're going to move pretty quickly on. I've contacted our engineers to find out what we have to do to move forward. We have to, we will have all the work done and all the bills submitted by February 14th of 2018. So, we're going to be working really hard to get this project up and running. Again, this is a grant that pays for this, so we're excited. And again, everyone probably remembers I've been talking about it for a couple of years now, about all the work we did going down IDNR. We had your presentation. This gives us a quarter of a mile walking path. It gives us a soccer field, updates all three of our baseball fields. There's some new lightage going in. There's new parking for cars to park. There's a new playground over there. And all this is all behind Waverly School. So, again, we're excited that we received that grant and that that grant has been unsuspended. All right, with that said, move to village clerk, Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, there's no meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, August 13th. Excuse me, 30th, that's the fifth Tuesday. It was great seeing the community working together in so many positive directions, including four very successful back-to-school events. Many thanks to everyone who contributed and participated, and special thanks to Sauk Village Church of God, Crossroads, Grace United Church of Christ, Camilla Jones and the Kate Jones Learning Center, and the Sauk Village Neighborhood Watch, who joined with School District 168 this year. I had the pleasure of attending three out of four of these events. I hated to miss jamming with Jesus this year, but it was county fair day with the family. Trustee Myers shared a letter with me that he received from a meeting that he recently reported on. Calvary Church hosted an All Lives Matter event that trustee Myers was very happy to attend, and that made an impact on him. He almost had tears in his eyes when he showed me the letter yesterday. And that letter will be going out on our email alerts. While trustee Myers made an impact on them as well, Calvary, trustee Myers, and other first responders will continue to focus on unifying and strengthening relationships within the South suburban communities. Fundraising for the 60th Anniversary Committee has begun. We will be hosting a trip to the Horseshoe Casino on November 11th. Tickets are $35. You can register for entertainment mobile app. Use the entertainment coupons wherever you travel. You can take that mobile app with you. The cost is $20. I also had the pleasure of attending the last intergovernmental community partnership meeting. It was very informative, and I believe this group of leaders from the municipality, school district, library, and residents will prove to be a great benefit. Last week, several ideas were brought to the village board, one of which is the community service program with Bloom Trail High School. During the community partnership meeting, I expressed my experience with helping students earn their hours for various reasons by partnering with Parks and Recreation and village staff. I think this is a great program, and I offer to continue assisting with the program. As a village board member and a library board member, I will continue to engage with this committee and help in whatever way I can, starting with attending the October 1st fundraiser. I'm looking forward to it. Finally, Human Relations Chair Rank Williams asked and expressed condolences to Human Relations Commissioner Latanya West on the loss of her husband, which he's already done that. But we would like you to please, thoughts and prayers are with Latanya and her family at this time. The arrangements are as follows. Next Tuesday, August 30th, Lee and Son's Funeral Home, 78308 South Cottage Road in Chicago. The viewing is 10 to 11 a.m. The service is at 11 a.m. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Move to village administrator, Director of Public Safety, GW Fairman.
Mayor, board, and mayor and board members, rather. My report is going to be a summation of other people's report, specifically building. I don't want to step on anybody. Briefly about Public Works. And trustee Burgess, can I ask some questions? If I'm going too far, please tell me I'm stepping on your area. But first of all, in community development, I will help these reports to the trustees, the board, the board reports. But the summary is for the front office of community development, we have, we filed three liens equalling $13,998.56. And we have 24 lien letters sent out this week equalling $35,867.79. And we're waiting, giving the owners 14 days before we send out to the council to get money owed to the village, deducted from various funds from various homeowners. The finance department, we had a 42% increase in water sewer revenues over the same period last year. This year, we had like, as of today, $638,408.20 versus last year at this time, $377,975.80. And I want to say that we still have about 100 some thousand of people owing $4,000 or less, like 150, 180,000, and we're trying to get people to pay their fair share. Okay, the finance department also has completed annual report ending April 3016 for the seized assets for the Department of Justice. This is a requirement from DEA. May through July, monthly financial report will be issued within 10 days. And I'd also like to say that, I think I've said it, May, June, July will be within the final 10 days. With reference to, with reference to the Kevin Waller, and I'll try to agree with trustee Burgess, I want to point out a couple of things, and I'll give his full report if he don't have. Public grounds and buildings, obviously they're continuing to cut. Going, all villages are cutting grass in all those locations. And with the help of Mr. Gary Holcomb, we're going to get some other kind of more substantial, I want to say moors and cutters for larger weeds to some of these vacant houses back lot, real life. The other thing is staff is working with the vendor to, and I've heard a lot of questions about this, to evaluate 20 individual locations where lights are going on and off, possibly with wire issues within, wire issues on our side. In other words, it may not be ComEd, it may be us. The other thing is, we will be more specific at the next one, Kevin tells me. On the building, work has been formed on HVAC unit. On the building, work has been formed on HVAC unit in the police department. We found that had a bad compressor, at least Kevin did. The unit is 16 years old and needs replacement, and he has turned in to three quarters. Importance about this is that this is very important to determine, peace communication, police communication and record keeping. The garbage, we all know about it, it's a day-to-day cleanup. Kevin says, and I agree, if you see illegal dumping, please call the police. Help keep our town clean. Hydrants and valve repairs and replacements, staff is preparing to replace the hydrant at 22426 Stossler. Also, storm sewers. Staff has been planning out storm sewers due to heavy rain, and we have three locations that we're working on. And most of these are in Lincoln Meadows, that's 1904 219 Place, Southwest Corner of Oakbrook and South Road, and 1914 Mary Byrne. And then it's 219 Place, it's almost completed, and Oakbrook will be, will be the next to go to get repaired. They're continuing to remove trees, and staff, on landscaping staff also started landscaping last year's digs from beet boxes and main bricks, and any other digs, they're done slow-moing. And that concludes my report. That's the mayor and the board.
Thank you, move to reports of the trustees and the board committees. The senior committee and verification committee. The senior committee first. Again, there's a alert for Medicare beneficiaries. You may be contacted by scammers pretending to be from Medicare. Questions are often asked if Medicare will legitimately contact beneficiaries. There are times at the center of medical, I'm sorry, Medicaid, Medicare or Medicaid services, that's called the CMS, will run Medicare programs, may contact you by errors. Two important things to remember, that CMS or Medicare will not do, they will never call or come to your door without first sending a letter in the mail explaining why they are trying to contact you, and they will never ask for your Medicare number or social security number, because they already have it. This fall, just so seniors know, the CMS is sending out a letter to random selected Medicare beneficiaries in part of Illinois and other states, invited to take part of a Medicare current beneficiary survey. It would be called a MCBS. The letter sent to random sample of people explains that a research from NORC at the University of Chicago, and the CMS contractor conducting a survey, and it will be contacting them. Just remember that the survey is optional. If you do not receive the letter, but receive a call from any person visiting from somewhere saying they are from Medicare or NORC, be cautious. Don't share any information with them. Let's see here, the senior committee opens senior activities, again, still every Friday from 12:30 to 3:30. Again, remember, there's no meetings, no membership dues, just come out and join the fun. There's always light refreshments, bottled water. And then, of course, the game of choice is Rummy Cube. And, but they also have other games, and they also have their computers, TV, and the library rooms. So, seniors are welcome to come out. This Saturday, this is the first one on August 27th, there's an open senior activity with a potluck meal. It's at 5 o'clock, doors are going to open at 3 p.m. All seniors 50 years old, or older, are invited. If you want to bring a covered dish that will feed anywhere from eight to 10 people, or servings, you can sign up, you can see Steve Shumpfisk or Frank Lambs, who come on the senior committee. And lastly, the South Village Bluegrass meeting on Sunday, which would be Labor Day Sunday, September 14th, will be closed. So, they're canceling the September 4th Bluegrass. All righty, that's the senior. And let's see here, verification. Let's see, the August meeting was canceled due to the committee was busy with the Hootsie Awards. This year, 54 awards were given, and three of those were to businesses, McDonald's, Bear Paint, and Weatherstone Insurance. The committee will continue with weeding and watering as necessary. Weeding is on the committee's radar, and now the Hootsies have been completed. Volunteers are always needed, and welcome to join the committee's efforts. The next committee meeting will be held on the third Wednesday of September at 10 a.m. here at the North Hall. And that concludes for the verification committee. All right, with that said, move to Parks and Recreation Committee, Trustee Jones.
The asbestos removal was done today in the community center on the jump side. I haven't gotten a chance to take a look at it once it was all the way down, but I know that they started there first and then went over to the police station. 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. Friday. That would be Uno night in the community center. All are welcome. This will be a very kid-friendly environment, so for some of you aggressive Uno players, it can get pretty, pretty bad with Uno, but that's something that, it's going to be a kid-friendly environment and all are welcome. Saturday, that's open gym from 11 to 3. And the corn and dog roars. There's flyers on the back table. And that will be Saturday, September 17th, from 11 to 5, right out in the back in the park. And there will be free movies inside the community center and free popcorn. And this is a collaboration with other community partners. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Trustee. Public Works, Trustee Burgess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things. As was stated earlier, I did talk to Kevin Waller today, trying to do, and what we're going to try to work on. But there were a few questions, as you stated, Mayor, about the ongoing projects. There's one here, I don't think that's from Lincoln Meadows, but they worked yesterday, I'm sorry. She's right over there.
Scared you now.
The lights that are over there, it happens that all the lights that we have in the village, there are 20 lights that actually are not owned by the village. I think you have one of them. Going to ask me how that happened? But anyway, irregardless of that, Kevin said it could be a wiring problem, which if it is, it's going to take a lot of work, because we have to actually get inside that and change the wiring. He may, it may be just a small resistor. If it's a small resistor or a ground fault, then that's easily fixed. So, that's what they're going, looking at now evaluating. Also, as far as the sinkholes, there's two sinkholes that are, one is in Lincoln Meadows, and there's one in Deer Creek. Due to the circumstance with concrete right now, we cannot, we can't, the money is not there to purchase concrete at this point. What they're going to do is they're going to put asphalt. The payment that you saw today in the, that was reported on, is just a partial payment, so we can go back and start getting asphalt. So, they're going to shore it up right now until we can, until we can get enough concrete, or we can get the money for the concrete, that they can put concrete. But right now, they're going to shore it up with asphalt, so it can make it through the winter. And that'll be over there, so you can let the homeowner right there that's in Lincoln Meadows know that. They're going to tear it up, shore it up, so it doesn't cave in. Also, it was read by JW Fermin about some of the things that they were working on. But I understand that we're going to be working also on identifying the hydrants. The hydrants were identified by the fire department and by Public Works, but we're looking at putting a sleeve on top of the hydrants, and letting the residents and the fire department, because, you know, a lot of times when they come up to a fire or whatever, they may not have time to look at it, they may just run. But there's something there that's visible. They were going to look at, to get a sleeve, so we could really identifying from a distance if that fire hydrant is operable. So, that's something that Kevin Waller, along with the village and the board, is going to be looking at to purchase those. Also, there was a problem with people throwing garbage. I think it was mentioned before that when you cut grass and you keep the grass in the street, they're going to identify that. They may be handing out, or telling code, they hand out tickets, since that's a violation. If you cut grass, when you get to the street, turn your mower around and push the grass back into where the grass is at, because after a while, it will clog up the sewers, and then quite naturally, if that's clogged up, you get a rain, then it'll go, it'll clog up the street, and eventually it gets to people's homes. So, that's something that we talked about also. Tree removal, it was made, it was, it's still ongoing. They still have over 300 trees to still be cut down throughout the village. It was reported, people were calling about the stumps that are left. I understand that, you know, they try to cut us down as far as they can, but sometimes they can't do it. I would just kind of give people a heads up, if you see them cutting, go out there where your tree is at, dig down about five or six inches, so they can cut that down. All you have to do is put dirt on top of it. You don't have to have that stump shown, so that's something that you can't do. Yes, they said they're going to come back and eventually grind them out, but I can tell you this, they still have 300 trees left. And by the time they come back and grind it down, you know, if you got it down far enough, you know, it's basically maintenance on your side too. I mean, that's your home. I'm not telling you not to, but you should, you know, do something, and kind of help them out if you see that they're cutting in front of your house, or they're coming down your house. Help them out by, you know, help yourself out by digging down, so they can get down as far as possible. They're working on the vehicles. Public Works has a lot of different avenues that they work on. They work on the vehicles for the police department and do minor repairs, they do oil changes. So, quite naturally, when they're out there cutting grass, they don't have a lot of time to do a lot of maintenance on the vehicles. But I understand today, and I think it was reported before, that they're cutting down the vacant lots now. So, Public Works is actually cutting the vacant lots. Those are the people that we cannot get in touch with, cannot find out who owns it, or they just don't. So, if you see something like that, please call the village and let them know. We kind of have an idea who the lots are, and they haven't got to. Public Works is doing that, and they're doing it on the weekend. So, if you haven't got to you yet, it's going to happen, and they're targeting those areas. That was about it. Oh, I think I mentioned it once before. If you see a water main break, and it's after village hall is closed, which is 5 o'clock, call the non-emergency number 1331, 7581331, and let them know there's a water main break. That's the police department. They will in turn check it out. And if it's really, really bad, they'll call someone, have someone come out. If not, they will still call Kevin to let him know that that water main break is there. So, if you see that, call the non-emergency number, and let them know that there's a break in your neighborhood, because it does affect your pressure. Especially if you see it shooting up 10 feet in the air, it does affect your pressure. That's all that I have. Thank you. See, may I add one thing, I think, is that if you have a vacant house that has vacant lots, and the grass is high, you can call the police department, because they will put a sticker on that, and they will actually tow that, but they got a certain amount of days, seven days for people to get out there. We've done that with a couple of locations. That's going to help when we get the ability to get in and cut the grass like it should be. We've already moved, I think, three last week, right, just one minute. Just, I'm glad you said that, Mr. Fermin and board. I've been around to the neighborhoods. Here in the last week and a half, just riding around, looking, talking to some of the residents. The green stickers are a pro and con, so that everyone knows. It's a pro that you can identify, but it's a con to let you know that house is vacant, and someone can squat it there. So, that's something I think we as a board and mayor, we should look at, because there are, there were squatters in some of these homes that were so-called vacant, with the stickers on them. It helps you identify that that house is not vacant, but our police officers cannot be everywhere. So, some of the neighbors are complaining that, you know, that those homes, and they can tell they're not vacant, so there's no one in there, so they go in. Not only do they squat, they also still, the copper and the toilets in there, whatever else is in there. So, it'd be something that we need to probably address. I don't know what type of way, but there's something we need to talk about, find maybe a different solution, because if they can identify that and go in there, and it might be next to someone's home, and they're squatting, that could be a problem. So, I think that's something we should really seriously think about, either changing or some, some other come up, but it's another way to let, because really, you're doing, letting the police know that the house is vacant. That's what you're trying to do. But it's also lets the undesirables know that it's vacant also. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, move to Housing and Governmental Committee, Trustee Case.
The Housing Committee met earlier this month, and I reported on that. So, we don't meet again for a couple of weeks. The intergovernmental portion of that, I'm a little perturbed. I spent over a half an hour last week talking about five programs that I think will benefit the residents of South Village. I asked the trustees to give me their consensus, whether or not we could place those items on the agenda to be voted upon. As you would notice, there is nothing on the agenda regarding those five projects. There was only, there were tons of questions that were asked, and I tried to answer most of them. And there was only one dissenting opinion. Trustee Washington House didn't care for the community service project. However, that means there were sufficient trustees left to vote on this issue to get it resolved. I have delayed talking to Bloom Township, because this board has not authorized me to move forward on that, to try to in turn offer a program that benefits the students at Bloom Trail who have a community service requirement before they need graduation. And so, there was a little urgency for me to get that done. But since now that, that does not appear on the agenda, neither do the other four projects that I brought up appear on the agenda. So, Mayor, village clerk, whomever makes the call, I would like you to either explain why those items do not appear on the agenda, or we can scrap them if you don't want to be bothered with them, whatever you want to do with those. But the people on the partnership committee have devoted a lot of time, a lot of time, to looking into these areas, and to just ignoring it is wrong. So, either we need to, we as a board, decide if we're going to address those five projects, if we're going to throw them in the garbage and forget about them, and move on to something else. But to keep delaying this week after week, I didn't have to say anything last week, for what it was worth, because I talked and answered the questions that were asked of me from Trustee Williams primarily. She asked a half dozen questions of all, and so we had a good discussion to try to iron this out, smooth it out, make people understand the need. There's nothing about the tours of the municipality. I mean, that kind of thing is something that we need to move on. It's things that we need to do as part of the partnership team. So, this board says, yes, you can do it, but there are things that we have to do to make sure that it flows smoothly. And we want to avoid any hiccups as we start doing this. But we can't keep sitting on our hands, because this board is sitting on its hands, and nobody's doing anything. So, that's just my brief comment on intergovernmental. And if someone decides to address the issues that I brought up, the projects that I brought up last week, that'll be fine. If they don't appear on the next agenda, then I'm just going to go back to the board report to them, this board. Go back to the partnership committee and report this board is not interested in working in a cooperative relationship with them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, last week, intergovernmental initiative did ask for, they wanted a representative from the village to work in tandem with the school district. And he asked for you, Mayor, to either appoint or sort...
And he asked for you, mayor, to either appoint or, so in other words, do it the right way, rather than just do it piecemeals. Because when he goes, well, whoever it is, it's your point to be that representative of the board or of the board with the other taxing bodies. They have, they have the right to go back and bring things back here. But I can understand what he's saying, that if he goes back and tells them, okay, this is what we're gonna do, then come back here and says, I didn't tell you to do that. That's, that's, that's not what he's looking for. He's looking for a, we asked, he's looking for a representative. He asked, he asked you to appoint a representative that would do that, that would be able to say, okay, the village will do this and bring it back to the board. But to go back and forth, because there are things that they want to do. They want to be able to set up, as he stated, they want to be able to set up different tours. They want to be able to basically speed for the village, but not where it would cost money. Not where, you know, we have to vote, quite naturally, yes, if it is, you have to vote it out. But at least have the recognition of this board, of yourself and in conjunction with the board that they can at least talk for the, for the, for the village. And that's what he's asking for representative. He didn't want to do it himself, which makes sense. You know, you, you come back and you do it the proper way, which is you ask. And he wanted it to be put on the agenda to have someone to be appointed, voted on, however it may be, to be that, that so-called liaison between the different taxing bodies throughout the village. And that's what he basically is asking.
Thanks for refreshing everyone's memory. If you want to go back and listen to the tapes, I've got last week's agenda sitting in front of me. You did very forthly for the agenda. You asked for a consensus from the board to move forward, number one, okay? Number two, you've provided, looking to this board to vote on. There's no motion. You didn't ask for any motion to be placed on, on the agenda. Or did you provide this board anything to vote on? Second of all, I made it very clear that I would present someone to the board during the first meeting in September. And it's already been told to the village clerk to have it on agenda. In fact, I went off and in that meeting, I asked the board if it was okay to present someone the first week of September and the board said yes, okay? And that was as a community service person to deal with community service, all right? And the, under the municipal tours, you're supposed to work and come back with some type of policy on what we're going to do and you just come back with dates, which you have not come back with dates yet. And then lastly, the residential handbook, you were going to make changes. In fact, I made sure that you received an electronic copy this last week or the end of last week so that you could make those changes and present those changes to the board at meeting. Again, there's no policy. You have not provided this village board with an updated policy to, to vote on. So if, you know, if you were expecting something to be on, on here, number one, you have to, you have to provide it, okay? Number two, we made it very clear at last week's meeting when we were gonna do stuff and what the steps were. So for, for you to come tonight, when this agenda came out a couple of days ago, to say that you wanted something on the agenda, and I don't know how we're supposed to know that you're supposed to move your own with something if you don't provide something. And again, based off our communication, again, I have last week's agenda sitting in front of me, based on our communication out here, your consensus of the board was you wanted to know if you had consensus of the board to move forward because you were not going to move forward if the board does not consensus with what you were agreeing. So again, I'll remind everyone the dates. First meeting in September, I will be, I will be bringing someone to the board to be that community service representative for the village, for the village. And we'll get the village board to approve that person. Again, it's a recommendation from the mayor with consent to approve the village board as that we're supposed to. The past recognition, that's your committee. Everyone out here except for one, like you said, said, go ahead and forward. So your committee is going to do that, okay? I don't see anything you didn't provide to anyone to recognize tonight that I know of. So that's why it's not on the agenda. Municipal tours, supposed to work together and come back with some type of information. I'll have to go back and try to read my, my chicken scratch. But again, looking at dates, times when we're going to do it. If I remember, I said, we saw it was only going to be three days, approximately three groups. So we're gonna try to make sure, and I also said during that meeting, make sure you, do you have your fairment note? So you can go ahead and make sure that those places are available. And your committee, not just board to vote on, but your committee will be able to do that. And again, the review of the handbook, you have not provided support with anything, so.
As usual, you're wrong, Mr. Mayor. Go back and listen to the tape. Number two, I'm waiting on your director of public works to provide his input for the handbook. I cannot do anything with the resident handbook until your director of public works provide the information that was requested. That's number one. Number two, I asked for a consensus for the book. Why am I gonna ask this committee to go through all of this work unless this board wants to do it in the first place? It starts with the approval to do it. And then they can start filling in the blanks. It doesn't start with them creating a whole new world and you saying no to them. The guidance comes from, unfortunately, from you as mayor. But we need to get that done. So listen to the tape very carefully. You will not hear me ask for a consensus to move forward. You will never hear those words come out of my mouth. You will never hear those words. So go back and listen to the tape and then you can just make your own determination from that point on.
Again, trustee, for something to be voted on, make sure you please provide the board. In fact, I'll tell you what we're gonna do is put me on the first meeting of September that you can come back to review the resident handbook that you said your committee will vote. Then you have a person on your committee that's with Public Works. So you should have no problem getting that information. All right?
Listen carefully. Director of Public Works has to do this. I'm finished.
So we'll be waiting for information from you on what you want to put on the agenda to vote on. All right, move to Public Safety and Orders Review Committee trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things tonight. First off, Friday, 10:00 AM, I, I'll meet with my co-chairman, he'll go over some ordinance that's sort of just people get. And from that meeting, I will schedule a meeting with my subcommittee to review the ordinance that we're gonna look at. Chief, is he still in here? Maybe J.W. might know.
Chief, right there, at the door. Chief?
Anyway, oh, there he is. Hey, chief, the, I've heard that, was there a ruling on the dog that killed the other dog? The dog has to be removed or what did town?
Well, it's removed. Officer, Officer White verified the dog was removed and taken to the Humane Society in Chicago Ridge. And there was a ruling by the judge on Monday, I believe it was.
Yes.
And finding he guilty and, and a fine. Unfortunately, the judge rules on a fine, not us.
Did Officer White get a chance to relay that to Tammy? Probably was already in court.
She was in court.
Okay. And I'll say, another note, the baseball game, the fire department head versus cops. They, they won by one, but you guys gotta look at something other. Now, you take a firefighter stand on first base and a police officer runs the first base and you think we're crazy, we're gonna tell that police officer that's carrying a .357 mag and that he's out? Hey, remember, we only carry fire hoses, all right? And we carry action, but they got guns. So anyway, it was a good, we all had fun, slop around in mud and everything, but it was fun. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Trustee, all I have to say is one thing. That first base firefighter you had, one of our mayors hit him. Your firefighter did not move and our, one of our mayors went tumbling head over heels when he bounced off of him. So there was no going through that first base firefighter. No, he was, he was a brick wall. All right, move to Neighborhood Watch Committee trustee Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say that coming into the meeting tonight, I got a very disturbing phone call that my god sister passed away. I had contemplated not coming in because I'm a matriarch of my family on my mother's side and they just all rely on me, but I wanted to come in anyway. So it is not with any less enthusiasm that I report that I am just so proud of the committee, Neighborhood Watch, for all of the hard work and the due diligence that they did. We actually were able to purchase and receive donations of five hundred and thirty-five book bags with school supplies, which was just incredible. I'm going to really do something later when I'm in a much better frame of mind too, for them and with them. They were outstanding committee. Also, I want to thank all of these people that were able to patronize our program this year. We always list all of the people that helped us sponsor and make that program a great success. I would also like to thank all of the parents that came up and thanked us for all of the hard work that Neighborhood Watch did to make that bookbag program a success again this year. There's just so much going on in the land. There's so much going on in Saw Village. One of my block club captains, Ed Sullivan, a lot of you know him. He is, he has given me permission to announce that he asked you all to say a prayer for him and his wife. He is in stage four, prostate cancer. His wife has congested heart failure. One of my other block club captains, I don't know if I'm privileged to say her name. She has been fighting congested heart failure for a while. She was rushed to intensive care with a heart attack. And you know, life is just short. It's just so much going on. My heart is very heavy tonight. Not that people care, but I'm just letting people know why I'm in a subdued mood tonight. I just really don't feel like dealing with too much anything. When you are healthy and walking around and you're fine and then in thirty minutes you get a phone call that you're dead, not dying, but gone, life is just surreal. But I do want to thank those of you that did work with Neighborhood Watch to help make that program a success. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Budget, Finance and Community Relations Committee trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Budget and Finance Committee will be meeting immediately after the Ordnance Review Committee on Friday here at the village hall. Also, I received no questions from any members of the board for accounts payable. And Mr. Hurston, you did direct those questions to me earlier about accounts payable, but those were answered, correct? As far as, so I don't even follow up with you, anything with you. That's all I have. Thanks, though.
Thank you. Move to new business. As for motion to approve the accounts payable on these first minutes for August ninth, 2016 through August twenty-third, 2016, according to Saw Village policies, your motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, before you make that motion, I would like to make an amendment to that to not include, as I stated before, immediate checks. The immediate check was already paid and approved at that time by the consensus of the board. It shouldn't have to be put in as another approval of the board if it was passed already and it was paid. I've asked this several times, why do we include this? It was already paid, it was already approved by the consensus. Why are we voting on this again?
Because if you look at especially the credit card payments?
I didn't say credit card. I'm talking about the immediate check for petty cash approved, for petty cash. It was paid already. We talked about that at the last meeting, about where the money came and everything. It was approved, you had the consent of the board. Why are we reapproving? I've asked it many times to take immediate checks off accounts payable. If it was paid for already, why are we voting on it again?
All right, so you're asking to make a motion to amend?
Yes.
And remove the immediate petty cash. You got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second name, questions or comments? Village clerk, please call roll.
Yes.
Myers, Tate?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Okay, motion carries. All right. As for item B, a motion to approve the ordinance for the village of Saw Village, Cookinwell Counties, Illinois, authorizing and approving an agreement for extension of collection and transportation of municipal toll and place buying between the block of Saw Village and municipal services. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
I got a motion on the floor. I got a motion already, is there a second? Got a motion and second name, questions or comments?
Comment?
Trustee Washington.
I just want to say, based on my question to Mr. DeLuca, when would be the last time that you would service the village? If we did not enter into this agreement and you said immediately, you all will not pick up any more garbage immediately. That was correct, right? And also, you're skyline in our republic, you all have been serving Saw Village, I think, I heard over fifty or sixty years. Sixty, sixty-two years you all have been providing garbage pickup for Saw Village. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Question, Mayor, have you, are you on item B now?
We're on B still. We got a motion and second on the floor.
And this is not for the contract, this is for the ordinance, correct?
Correct. You have a question or comments? Are you none, village clerk, please call roll.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Tate?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams, yes? Burgess?
No.
Mayor votes yes. All right, move to item number C, motion to approve special meeting minutes for August ninth, 2016. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and second name, questions or comments? Are you none, village clerk, please call roll.
Myers? Tate?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams, yes?
No.
Mayor votes yes. Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve board meeting minutes for August ninth, 2016. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and second name, questions or comments? Are you none, village clerk, please call roll.
Tate?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Williams, yes? Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Mayor votes yes. Motion carries. Move to item number seven, miscellaneous comments from the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we have to go back to item A. All we did was vote to take off.
We put it as a motion on the floor with amendment. You made the amendment to remove, so we, we passed it. So.
We passed to.
There was a motion, the motion to approve the accounts payable by amending, by removing the $2,000. So it's already been passed.
No.
No, I made the motion to take that off.
No, his motion was to remove the item.
To remove the item.
Not to, to approve the entire packet of accounts payable. No, he asked for it to be removed, mayor. That, that, that was a motion, it said for it to be removed. It didn't say to approve the whole packet.
That was way ahead of the motion. So the motion was, was approved. All right, move to item number seven, miscellaneous comments from the mayor and board of trustees. Go with trustee Myers.
Just for clarification, when the items that are for immediate checks are on accounts payable, I know that we've gone over this a couple of times and it is part of the Budget and Finance Committee policy. The reason why that's on here is trustee Burgess is absolutely correct. This, this petty cash check and other account, or, I'm sorry, immediate checks do receive a consensus from the board via email, usually via phone call. However, if there's an emergency situation or an immediate situation, the finance director needs to get a consensus to make sure that the payment goes out. Once the consensus is gotten, whether it's through email or whatever, that money is then able to be spent. However, our emails are not something that is read during a board meeting. So the reason why it's always on accounts payable is for accountability, for transparency, so that it's there right here on accounts payable, so that we get it, so we're reminded of it, so that the public can read it and the public can see that the board approved an immediate petty cash check of $2,000. And it wasn't something that was done just via email a week ago or whatever. That's the reason why those are on there. And I know that we've had some questions before about whether or not we should do immediate checks, why it aren't accounts payable, things like that. But just as a reminder to the board and to the audience, is that's why. We want to make sure that everything, all the monies that go out are accounted for.
Just a couple of comments. Like I said, we, I was involved with the bookbag giveaway and I want to personally thank the school board that represented here and the superintendent and everybody that's involved. It's all about the kids and I ain't old enough to use the word kids. And they are, they're going up there picking up. And they are, they're going up there picking up their bookbag and getting them bookbags free, and it's just for, it's for them. Uh, it was, we was able to give away quite a few bookbags. We still have some left over, but, uh, we did a concert with the help of a lot of people. Uh, my only question, I can't understand it, is how can you possibly get an invoice if somebody drives up to you in a car and drop the money in it in a milk jug? There's no way. Bring the money in, dump it on the, uh, treasurer's desk, and he counts it, and he puts it in the bank. Now, if he wants what he counted out as the invoice, find it in, you have no problem telling the, the finance director, give it to you. But there's no way that, I, I stood out in our corner and I received funds, I can't tell you how much money went in that milk jug, but I can tell you when I got back here, how much money that we put on the, the desk and he counted out, he gave us a receipt for that. But that, if that's what you want, yeah, no problem.
Yep.
And once again, the garbage situation, people, I've been involved in towns that where garbage has been discontinued, and when you get temperatures eighty-five, ninety-five degrees outside, and within two days, you can just imagine what, uh, the garbage is going to smell like, and that was, uh, that is what we were put up against. And if I had to do it again tomorrow, save that from happening in this town, I would do it again tomorrow. But that's what we was looking at. Yes, we do, we do, I grant, we need to look into it, find out what happened. And we definitely have people on board now checking into it, doing the internal investigation. And, yeah, cause I'm, I'm a resident of this town too, just like everyone you guys are. I pay my garbage bill. And, you know, if, uh, I, I kind of, I think I know what happened, but I'm not going to speculate. I, I know somebody stole it just that it was put in general fund instead of putting it in a proper line, but I don't know that. That's what the investigator is going to come out and tell us. When they come out and tell us what's going to go on, then, then we'll have an answer. And when they tell us what's going to go on, I will make sure that if the mayor does announce it, or anybody else, I will come out for it. I don't have nothing to hide from them, but, and, uh, Martha, I just gave tonight, uh, a card to trustee Tate that, uh, Winnipeg's on board with us. So, alright, that's all I have, thank you.
Question for trustee Williams.
Trustee Tate?
You may recall that last year when the auditors came out, they talked about us having items that had been paid listed on accounts payable. And they in fact stated we should not have, if it's been paid, it should not be listed like that. And you said you were going to do some kind of separate document that would reflect that this concurrence was taken and this piece was paid already, so it's not part of the accounts payable. But that's what we heard from our auditors last year. So I just don't, I'm confused, I'm confused now about what we should actually be doing in, in the meantime.
Yeah, we, we did talk to auditors about that, and they said that it wasn't a practice that they recommended, and then we asked them what they would recommend, and they did, they didn't tell us anything. They said it was something they hadn't encountered before. And you're right, that is when we went to, as a committee, and we discussed having that separate document attached, and it is not attached, and so this is the way that the finance director chose to present it this time, um, and I will definitely address that with him and remind him of that separate document, but I would rather have it on accounts payable and, than not to have it at all. Because again, it, to me, it seems like that would be two thousand dollars that would be spent that the board may be aware of, because we received the emails or we talked to the finance director, but that nobody else would be aware of. So I would prefer that it's written somewhere in black and white, but we did discuss a separate document, and I don't know why it was created this way this time, but I will, I will send an email to the finance director through my number next time.
Thank you.
trustee Jones?
Well, um, I have something personal that I want to talk about, and, um, it's about safety for the community, and it's about respect. Um, I'm an elected official, I understand that. I know that questions, um, finger pointing, name calling, and all of that can happen to me, and I'm, I'm cool with that. I'm perfectly fine, and my family is perfectly fine with that. But what my family is not perfectly fine with is creating a unsafe situation due to certain trustees, trustee that's sitting here, um, making statements about my wife. Um, I've never spoken about anyone's wife. There's been heated moments up here, never taken it to Facebook to bash someone's family, but people's family reacts, they see these things on Facebook, they want to know who's talking about someone that didn't put themselves in this position. You can talk about me all day long, you can do what you want to do, and that's what I'm here for, and I'll try to get an answer, and I'll try to resolve it. But to jump on a regular citizen's should ask, and we as trustees should have enough thick skin to answer those questions. If you, if you can't handle this as a trustee, why would you want to be a mayor? So I would prefer, I'm trying to be the mediator in a lot of heated arguments that's going on in the background, please, please, if you're not, if you, if I am not, if you're not talking about me or elected official, please keep my family out of this. I have a lot of family that's local in, in Ford Heights and Chicago Heights that's on Facebook, then, and some of the things that's being seen, I would like to put the fan on that right now, so we could please just stop this right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's too much I could say, but tonight is not the night for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things, and, um, first of all, I just wanted to say to Mr. DeLuca, to Skyline that used to be in the village, yes, it was sixty-two years that Skyline has been here, has served this village, they were family owned, and with that, they had a lot of leeway, and they were able to go along with the village when we couldn't pay, when we couldn't fulfill our requirement. We could do a lot of different things. Skyline was able to overlook and help us out over those years. My decision today was based on corporation and business. Skyline no longer owns or operates, it's owned by Ed Conglamore right now. And if you saw the contract and read the contract, it is a more business-like contract, but it's also a contract that is ironclad, which means there is no leeway. If you don't do A, B will happen. That was my decision, it was not a personal decision, it was a decision I made on behalf of the village for a business. Who knows from now, next ten years, whether Mr. DeLuca or the family will even be involved? And I'm looking for something in the future that we could, if we have to negotiate, we can. But I appreciate what we, what, what, what Skyline and the family did for Sawtooth Village all these years, ever since I've been out here, thirty-four years. And I was trying to come to a conclusion where we can keep the contract that we have and then possibly negotiate another one in the next four years. That was my decision, and that's what it was based on. Because after looking at the contract, it was a business contract. Sure, we can have one like that ironclad, yes, if we didn't pay, they never shut our garbage off, they never stopped. You know, we had a time where we, we had a, a miscommunication. But that's my, my comment today is really, how and why did it get to this point? We're starting over again, or we're continuing the extension without the answer how we came to this impasse. People paid their money, and for Skyline or Republic, I'm sorry, to not get a bill for a month, in other words, they didn't get paid one month, we went out, we went without paying them, is not acceptable, because we get paid from the citizens each and every month. It may not be on time, but we get paid, sometimes we get paid two or three times, as I stated before, but they were only paid once, and sometimes they weren't paid at all. So to keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result is crazy. That's why I was hoping that we could find out why this happened, and everybody's throwing the bug back and forth, okay, it's their fault, it's this fault. Now, with this new contract, there's no such thing. Sixty-one days, I want my three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. That's why I made that decision, it's nothing else. Because if it was anything else, it would, it would have been a yes automatically, like I stated before. Skyline has always been there for us, they've always helped us out through hard times. Sometimes they didn't even have a raise. Before the contract that we had in two thousand eleven, they kept the raise the same. But now it's ironclad, it's a corporation, a multi, probably billion-dollar corporation that is in charge, now no longer is it a local. That was the reason why I made my decision. Second, Mayor, um, we're gonna have, uh, I announced it already and saved the date, we're having a veteran's celebration again this year on November eleventh and eleven. So that'll be eleven, eleven, at eleven o'clock here at the Village Hall. All veterans are invited, we're gonna have guest speakers, and we're gonna have some present, presentations. So right here, as we did two years in a row, we're gonna have another celebration right here for the veterans in the village, and in the surrounding areas also. Just wanted to bring that up, and that concludes what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you trustee. Uh, I know we've probably read this enough, but I just want to make sure we cover some of the stuff the trustee was asking, uh, which we've given out every meeting, uh, how did we get to where we are today? And I know that, uh, Mr. DeLuca and Ernie came to the board meeting, we talked about it. When you look at those amounts, uh, again, and something like two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars was due to underbilling, because residents were not charged what they were supposed to be charged, and we've provided all this information to the board, we've provided a situation to the residents. There's also the issue with, uh, the village did not provide the accurate house counts. So, uh, when you get to a point where you look at the amount of houses that are empty, the squatters, uh, that we had, again, remember, we were up to ninety-nine squatters that were taking village water, were getting garbage picked up, it was not paying a bill at all. So, you know, we've done all this, all this work in, in looking at how we got to this point, we provided the village board with all this information, uh, we provided with all the detail information. I think what's really important to realize is that, first of all, reverted back to zero, that's a three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar, nine hundred and five, sorry, three hundred eighty-nine, nine hundred and five dollar savings to the residents because of the underbilling, uh, and because residents not making their water bill payments. We also heard tonight that residents, uh, that have bills of four hundred dollars or more consist of lack of water payments of close to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So you think about this, you may be sitting out there, you may pay your water bill, but there's a lot of residents that's not paying their water bills, there's a lot of residents, uh, that's not keeping up. So we're able to, now, we're focusing on these, we're making sure that these water accounts are turned off so these residents come in. That's why JW was able to report tonight, the increase of revenue we've seen in the past year, because we are now going after these residents not paying their water, we are now turning their water off, and we're also working with Republic to make sure that they're not picking up that, that garbage at those houses, so that we do not get charged for a service that they're providing. That's what's important. The other thing too, is you think about the, the monthly increase. It's a dollar twenty-one per month that comes out to about four cents per day to have your garbage picked up, to be able to revert this, this amount that, that's all the back to zero. If you're a senior, we're able to get the language added that there's not a senior rate, you're not paying a dollar less per month for anyone that has a household of one, you just need one of someone sixty-five years or older to be able to get a dollar or less. That means the first year your garbage goes only on, only going, I'm sorry, only going to go up twenty-one cents per month. Okay, so we want to make sure this information, we provide this information every single meeting, we talked about this. The annual increase, we went from a five percent or CPI, whichever was less, down to a fixed three percent. Uh, again, it's a, a win-win for the village residents. Recycling, although we had recycling already, you had to buy blue bags, the blue bags were approximately a fifteen to thirty gallon capacity. Now, every single household is going to get a ninety-five gallon tote free of charge that, uh, Skyline will provide the information on when it's going to be picked up, provide training to the residents on how to, how to recycle, and you're getting that free of charge. It's, and it's included in the bill, okay? So you no longer have to go out and buy those, those blue bags, alright? The, the link for the contact, contract, I know it's been a lot of people talking about, it was extended ten years, okay? The, the house counts, Republic has agreed to work with our staff and conduct semi-annual house counts to make sure that we're ensuring payment, um, and billing reflects proper house counts and figures, and our staff is working with Skyline, I'm sorry, I should just get, with Republic, um, to make sure that they're only picking up the, the, the garbage at the houses that people are paying in. So, you know, we've put a lot of steps in line, there's been a lot of work in looking at how do we get this way, we've provided this information to the residents, and, and in the long run, uh, you know, I, I look at this as a win-win for, for you, the residents. Uh, so, I mean, again, some people are not going to think so, and, you know, again, you know, even though they, they may not think, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that, um, that, you know, first of all, make sure that we pay our bills, but second of all, try to negotiate in good faith with Republic, and, and Republic's here tonight, I appreciate you coming out. You know, Republic could have said, you know what, pay that three hundred and some thousand dollars, and we're stopping service until you pay it. They could have done that, and there'd be a lot more people sitting here tonight because their garbage was not getting picked up than the ones that are sitting here tonight that are upset because they got a dollar one, I'm sorry, a one dollar and twenty-one cents per month increase. So, um, again, trying to make sure that we continue to provide services, and it's at the lowest amount cost, and I encourage you, go out and see what other committees are paying. Now, other committees are paying a lot more, you know, we're, we're gonna be working with Republic, okay, we may not speak before you walk in. You know, we've got some residents, probably a couple handfuls of people that are on wells, okay, they're not getting charged through our water account, they pay more. You know, you as a resident could be paying what, what the residents on wells are paying, and, and, and they're paying probably anywhere from four to six dollars more, I think it's per month, than what you're paying because we've negotiated a price with Republic for, uh, for the residents who have water accounts. So, uh, we're gonna try to go back Republic, and we're gonna try to help the residents who have wells, we only have a few, but, uh, we're, we're giving a heads up, we've got a few residents that, that are looking for help, so, um, so again, I just want to make sure I share this, and, uh, again, it's out there, we've provided, like I said, just about every meeting, so, you know, and lastly, I just want to talk a little bit, and I know the, the trustee mentioned about Facebook. I, I think what the residents, and especially the board, I guess I got to talk to the board more, is you're in a position, elected official, where you're in a spotlight, okay? You know, think about if the President of the United States got upset about every single thing that came out against him, because there's a lot, I mean, they make comments that are vulgar about the President of the United States, they make comments every single day about the president, uh, that's not true. They're gonna do the same thing to you, you're no different, you're an elected official, okay? Now, I don't say much about Facebook, alright? Because the majority of the people that are out there that are attacking, number one, are not village residents, number two, they are bitter, and that's what you find, the people that are usually attacking you, they're bitter. You know, when I became elected official back in nineteen ninety-nine, you know, you'd never touched a, a... you know, you'd never touched, uh, a, a, uh, elected official or you'd never touch a candidate's family. That was taboo. You'd never talk about their parents, you'd never talk about their mother, you'd never talk about their wives, you'd never talk about their children. Because you know what? They were not running for political office. Okay? But, think about this, you know, you, there, there's perverts out there that will go extra mile, extra mile, to try and make you look bad, okay? The, you know, and again, when you talk about Facebook, I've got this individual who stalks my children's Facebook pages to try to find pictures to make me look bad because these are pictures that you always take with your fa, as a father with your kids. They're funny pictures. Can you imagine how my kids feel knowing that their Facebook page was stalked to find a picture that they took and fun that someone uses against me and they use it saying courtesy of social media? Well, you know what? They're a stalker. Because they're older than my kids, makes me wonder if they're a pervert to go out there and pull the stuff off. You know, these, the individuals go around sneaking by my house trying to take pictures inside the windows. I've got daughters. They, they, they take videos of my kids. So, you, you think about, you know, tonight you talked about someone's attacking your, your wife. You know, I've been doing this for years. Can you imagine if someone comes by, taking, trying to take pictures inside your windows when your, your girls or your kids are just sitting, your wife's dressing? You know, you, you've got someone type going by taking videos of your kids because they've got nothing better to do. So, you know, again, as elected officials, you should be very careful because like I said, there's pedophilers out there and perverts. So, um, I think you just need to be careful, alright? Alright, with that said, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion, a second? Motion, a second, all favor say aye.